Call the meeting to order, I'm showing that it's five thirty-two. Roll call please.
Mayor Quittsah?
Here.
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Maugh?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Okay, we need a motion to approve, or do we have any changes to the February eleventh minute of the planning commission?
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes as we see.
That's second.
Sir?
My motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
Well, you abstain.
I abstain.
You abstain. Alright, moving on and starting with the proposed change to the existing monument sign at Wilmore Windmill Golf Course.
Nobody's gonna be here, Mayor, just a quick housekeeping item. VZA did approve it. The minutes from the VZA meeting are not approved yet, so they're not attached. But, they did go through and approve that addition to that sign. So, this housekeeping that you guys work at it again.
We have a table, I think, don't we?
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to approve?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Since it was approved there and we sent it there, do I have a motion to accept?
I will make a motion that we accept that submitted with the VZA approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? Any, none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to proposed sign with dynamic display at fun and stuff. Want to come down?
Sure.
Pull up a chair, talk to us a little bit.
Sure, I think everyone has a copy. And the mayor put a, do you think they have some of these memorandum, memorandum from you? The only thing I think different also is the actual display height of the sign, the dynamic portion is actually only thirty point two inches by eighty point six inches. I think it does make the thirty percent rule.
Well, did you get the comments from Brian and Fran?
Yes, I did give them a couple.
Yes, and that's, number two, his comment is what I've seen. I think he actually, because I think the, the way the code is written, it talks about has the ability to be dynamic or change what part of that sign, and the frame and stuff that holds it, of course, can't be.
Yeah, we had no idea how the frame was around.
Okay, right. And that's my take. Right, and it's thirty point two inches by eighty point six is the actual display.
No, we're gonna do, we're gonna read those. So, they go into the medicine for the audience. Alright, Kayla?
Do you want me to read one through nine also?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant is requesting to construct a freestanding sign on a pole located at six six one East Highland Road. Host sign area is fifty-nine point four square feet total. Included in the total sign area is a nineteen point four square foot electronic message center. I have reviewed the sign illustration in connection with this request and offer the following comments for planning commission consideration. Section eleven seventy-nine oh seven B of the Macedonia Planning and Zoning Code permits one freestanding sign with a maximum of forty square feet of sign area. However, section eleven seventy-nine oh seven F three does have a provision for increased sign area for facilities on large lots. For every one hundred lineal feet of lot frontage greater than three hundred lineal feet, ten square feet of additional sign area is permitted. In this case, the subject site has approximately seven hundred feet of lot frontage and provides an additional forty square feet of sign area. The code goes on to state that the maximum area of a freestanding sign shall not exceed sixty, sixty square feet with a bonus. Therefore, the sign area as proposed, fifty-nine point four square feet, complies with the area limitations of the code. The electronic message center proportion of this sign is regulated under section eleven seventy-nine oh nine, and said regulations are listed below in italics text, my comments in bold. Please note, city council recently passed a moratorium prohibiting, prohibiting EMCs, so this portion of my review is for information purposes only, since planning commission can't issue any approvals for signs that include an EMC until the moratorium expires or council lifts the ban. Number one, dynamic displays allowed, or, I'm sorry, dynamic displays are allowed only on monument, freestanding signs in commercial and industrial districts. Dynamic displays located in commercial, industrial districts, but that are located within, in one hundred feet of a residential zoning district must adhere to additional requirements set forth in subsection B nine hereof. The required setback for a dynamic display shall comply with section eleven seventy-nine oh seven C of the code. The proposed sign complies with this regulation. Number two, dynamic displays may occupy no more than thirty percent of the actual copy and graphic area. The remainder of the sign must not have the capability to have dynamic displays even if not used. Only one continuous dynamic display area is allowed on a sign face and only one sign per property is permitted. The dynamic display portion of this sign is nineteen point four square feet and the total sign area is fifty-nine point four square feet. Therefore, the dynamic display portion of this sign is thirty-two point six percent of the total graphic area of the sign. A dynamic display will need to be reduced to comply with a thirty percent limitation or a variance from the VZA is necessary. Number three, a dynamic display may not change or move more often than once every twenty seconds, except one for which changes are necessary to correct hour and minute date or temperature information. Time, date, or temperature information is considered one dynamic display and may not be included as a component of any other dynamic display. The time, date, or temperature information itself may change no more often than once every three seconds. This information has not been supplied at this time. Number four, the images and messages displayed must be static and the transition from one static display to another must be instantaneous without any special effects. This information has not been supplied at this time. Number five, the images and messages displayed must be complete in themselves without continuation and content to the next image or message to any other sign. This information has not been supplied at this time. Number six, every line of caffeine graphics in a dynamic display must be at least seven inches in height on a road with a speed limit of twenty-five to thirty-four miles per hour, nine inches on a road with a speed limit of thirty-five to forty-four miles per hour, twelve inches on a road with a speed limit of forty-five to fifty-four miles per hour, and fifteen inches on a road with a speed limit of fifty mile, fifty-five miles per hour or more. If there's, if there is insufficient room for copy and graphics of this size and area allowed under subsection B one hereof, then no dynamic display is allowed. This information has not been supplied at this time. Number seven, dynamic displays must be designed and equipped to freeze the device in one position if a malfunction occurs. The display must also be equipped with the means to immediately discontinue the display if it malfunctions, and the sign owner must immediately stop the dynamic, the dynamic display when notified by the city that it is not complying with the standards of this chapter. This information has not been supplied at this time. Number eight, dynamic displays must comply with the following brightness standards. A, dynamic displays must be designed to automatically adjust the brightness levels of the sign in response to ambient conditions. This requirement ensures the readability and brightness levels of the sign during the day and night. B, lighting levels shall not exceed one foot candle at the property line of the site utilizing a dynamic display. Number C, mitigative measures shall be employed to limit glare and spill light to protect neighboring parcels and to maintain traffic safety in public roads. D, no sign may be brighter than it is necessary for clear and adequate visibility. E, no sign may be of such intensity or brilliance as to impair the vision of a motor vehicle driver with average eyesight or to otherwise interfere with the driver's operation of a motor vehicle. F, no sign may be of such intensity or brilliance that it interferes with the effectiveness of an official traffic sign, device, or signal. G, the city may require submission of a light distribution plan if deemed necessary to ensure compliance with the intent of this chapter. This information has not been supplied at this time. Number nine, dynamic displays located within one hundred feet of residentially zoned districts shall be located away from said district, and the lighting levels from the display cannot exceed point five foot candles at the property line of a site utilizing the dynamic display. A, the sign shall be designed with sufficient landscaping as to properly screen it from the residential district. B, the sign shall be located on the site in the best possible manner to avoid any visual obstruction to the neighboring residential properties. The sign is not located within one hundred feet of a residentially zoned district. Without further information, I can't thoroughly review the sign proposal as related to the EMC. However, it is important to note that other than the EMC portion of the sign, the proposal complies with the area height and setback limitations of the code. If you have any questions or need additional information, please feel free to contact me.
Thank you very much, that was a long one. But, it's important for all of that information to get on. You're here today because the mayor would like to see your business get back on its feet after two years of devastating situation imposed on you by the city. I feel that there are only two retail spots that stand out in my mind, there might be a lot more that rely on a walk-in, walk-out trade, and that's Vic Sohar and you, in my mind, I might be wrong. Vic Sohar has one of those signs. Vic Sohar uses that sign very effectively. For the type of traffic that there is on that road, this type of sign is almost a must for your kind of business. The amount of traffic that would be going past this sign now will be greater than ever before, and perhaps that would be a way that the city helping you to gain back your business and maybe even exceed what your business was before. That's the whole idea of that bridge. If that works, then the city's plan for overall longevity has worked. We have a moratorium right now. The moratorium, there were some questions asked of Mr. Martin, and he, Brian France sent out a memorandum. Unfortunately, I only have one page here of it, there's two pages, and I have twelve copies of that instead of six of.
Do you, do you have a big mind?
The point that's important on this particular one is Macedonia is allowing EMC in Macedonia. They have a lot of that in the past with regulation, that's the key word. Outright prohibition can lead to constitutional challenge, which could result in EMC being erected in a location that is normally undesirable. You know, the reason we went to getting our sign ordinance, and getting our sign ordinance was extensive. All these are signage materials from coming up with our sign ordinance. It took years, okay? And there was a lot of questions that went back and forth as far as, are we gonna allow them, if we're gonna allow them, are we gonna control? One of the, the most advanced cities right now, one of the most talked about cities right now is the city of Kent. Kent has just absolutely blossomed into something that is an outstanding example of what can happen to municipality working with its businesses. But, it's amazing how, right on the front page of the community section of the Plain Dealer is a picture of an EMC at Kent State University, and the fact that everybody likes it because it gives information. The moratorium goes on till June, I believe, there was a six month moratorium, and I think it goes on till June. So, the question is, right now, we can't give you the okay to go ahead with it, alright, at this time, but there's talk about extending the moratorium. And I think extending the moratorium for aesthetic purposes, such as suggested in this memorandum from our planner, can lead to problems legally for the city. And that's what came out of all of this. I can show you section after section or any one where it references that controlling the signs is absolutely what you want to do, but outlawing them is not what you want to do, because if you outlaw them for the wrong reasons, you could have a problem. If the reason is, maybe it was a church that was located on a dark road and they were gonna put a big TV screen up in front of it, well, that happened here in Macedonia. Macedonia said, I don't think so, because that would be distracting to drivers. But, a sign calling people in, inviting them in, doing what you need so much, I feel is very, very efficient. So, that's my point of view on this and why you're here today. You have some things that you need to give us some more information on. I want to hear from the rest of the planning commission, what their feelings are, if we should start to proceed up to the point of actually saying, go ahead and build it, until the moratorium's lifted. That, that would be my feeling. I would like to see you be waiting, because, not be waiting, I wouldn't like to see you be waiting, I didn't say that right, be ready.
Right.
Alright, and we are looking at steelwork being done right now on the bridge? If that is in fact true, that is, did they start?
They were supposed to, yeah.
Yeah, they were supposed to, but you know how that is. But, if the steelwork is actually being started, this could be a done deal summertime. And summertime, all of a sudden, you get a lot of people coming flowing past your place again, and we got a lot of catching up to do with your place.
Yes.
So, any other feelings from anybody? I mean...
I don't have a problem with the sign, but we can't approve a pole sign because we don't allow pole signs. It has to be a monument sign, which means it has to basically come off of a base equivalent or virtually the same size as the sign all the way up, which is eight feet, eight and a half feet.
Take a look at Vic's.
Is that by Dunkin' Donuts over there?
Well, Dunkin' Donuts has one too.
Yeah.
I have, I'd have to read it again, I didn't know, obviously, we had a pole sign up there, obviously, that came down during the construction. Actually, it came down even early because they ran it over. So, it came down, but we had no sign. But currently, just so everyone sees what, what it's like currently, this is, this is the front of our property right here, and there's the wall, as you see, it's thirty point two feet in height. We used to have a view from, as cars go up and down there, they could see our golf course, see everything. There's currently no signs or anything we could do on most of our property until you would get to the bottom of the bridge. It's the only place we could put a sign. We'd have to add one more than thirty-two feet just to get up the roadway. So, we are way down in what's visible, when cars go up and down the road, you don't see people playing miniature golf or playing on their, on the events like you used to. And that isn't, is a concern for us, obviously.
That's a very, very interesting picture, can I keep this?
Sure.
Matter of fact, the grid stops just about at the, the eastern entrance here.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Right, so we're putting it in the property, right between the two driveways with us and the, and the business that we rent. As of far as most of these things on their review, most of them are software related. I mean, I could put down anything here that says, you know, we don't change the message more than this, there's no sign that doesn't have the ability to change the message, it's just that we have to have it static for twenty seconds or more. And complying with that isn't something I thought, I could write those statements out that will comply with those. The only thing that looks like it would have be an issue is the height, and like I said, the actual display height is, and that's why I have this, is thirty point two by eighty point six, and I think that comes out twenty-nine point something percent. I tried to stay right in your...
Yeah, that works.
Okay, great. In, in the guidelines as well as I understood them. I mean, to be honest, I'd like a bigger little sign, but that's what the guy, from my understanding what the guidelines did. The only concern I have with it, you know, planning, I understand the moratorium, I think it was till, I heard about this, we started reviewing it a long time ago, and then we couldn't actually put up a sign because, you know, they were using that as a, as a works area. And then I started doing it, and then they called in here and they said, well, the moratorium, we actually have, and it's just started, it goes into effect now, that was back, I think December twenty-second was the first time we heard of it, so they said it was six months, so I'm assuming the end of May. It takes time to even order this type of stuff, you know, we're talking six to eight weeks to order it, and then local, just for the dynamic display portion and the local sign company to build the top part, and then they come to put the two together.
There's no guarantee that the sign moratorium stops.
Okay.
Alright, but, I think something like this is key to reasons why it shouldn't stop. A legitimate business with a legitimate use in a legitimate place, that's what we should be about. When you talk about aesthetics and you talk about that being the reason for not allowing this type of signage, that leaves you wide open to being sued. That was repeated over and over and over again in the study conducted by Cleveland State University by a very renowned planner, you know, professor, college professor, and over and over and over in that study, they said, whatever you do, don't start talking aesthetics with sign control.
Particularly with iconic signs. You have no idea what that individual's gonna put on that sign, therefore, you can't judge its aesthetics, okay? But what you should do, and I think what we did in our legislation, is you can, you want to control what you can put on there, the size of the letters, the number of times, you know, it can refresh, even some of the color things. And, and I think, I think we did that adequately, you know, if we, you know, and I'm sure a year from now, we may look back on it and say, boy, maybe we should have done this instead of that, and we can change it. And the signs can change, because, like you say, they're all programmable, you know?
Well, here's where we're at tonight. Bob wants to get a feel, I think, of the planning commission, and perhaps we ought to go right around and everybody say how they would feel about even considering this. At this point in time, we are considering something that is under moratorium.
Right.
But, if we consider, if we come forward like, perhaps Bob could come back in a couple of weeks, we could table it, he could come back in a couple of weeks with all the changes that we're asking for, and be ready to submit. The planning commission legally would be allowed to say that this is within the scope of what our laws allow. Alright, Bob? And then, we have a representative from council, we have the mayor, it would be up to us to sell how important this would be to you and your business. The Las Vegas type of look, I think is the farthest things from anybody's mind when they're trying to drum up their business. Also, I can tell you is, in the service station business, after years of trying to put up plastic numbers in a windstorm that would change on a daily basis, as we all know, now everything is electronic. Electronics is to deliver a message and create a safer atmosphere. Why safer? Because as people are driving, they don't actually have to look at your place, they can see the sign, and it makes them aware of what's going on. So, would the planning commission be...
Yeah, if we table this, and then in two weeks we table again, every time he comes back, does he have to still pay?
No.
No. No, and if it comes back, we won't table again. My suggestion would be to make a decision that would at least give Bob some encouragement that somebody in, in part of the city gives a damn.
Oh, it looks fine, I mean, I have no problem with it at all, as long as we read the size, and you're gonna have to come up with the monument freestanding sign, rather than a pole sign, you know, that's...
Which way would you go with it?
Actually, number one of the...
Like, you were gonna go like, over here, we're systems packaging.
It's between the two, yeah, it's the, the direction.
Right, so, I mean, it's still, okay, alright, so...
It's double thanks, so there's...
And Bob, we're very, very lenient when it comes to the actual brick. Okay, there are signs up in this city that you should face here.
Yeah, that's fine, whether it's a monument, we could do either. What's the, because I read about sixteen feet is the maximum height, so what is the monument, you're saying is no longer sixteen foot height restriction?
No, it's just, where is it?
That's the monument size restriction, is sixteen feet tall?
No, no.
No.
Top of the sign is a sixteen feet, the monument has to replace the pole. The pole still sits there, basically, you box it in.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, putting it up with the pole...
How high does the monument have to be, though?
I mean, can I, build a monument all the way to the top, or do I put like flowers around, flower bed type of thing, round the base, or?
That's, that's...
That type of thing? That landscape, dub somebody's feet with flowers or things growing in there?
So, here now, you're starting to address the aesthetics of that sign.
Well, that's what I was wondering, just, it's like, you know, like the, if it conforms to the Western Reserve look, you know, maybe, like it is over there like Dunkin' Donuts.
So, there'll be a little pole, you'll be able to see those everywhere, not that the poles are covered at all, but that's actually a little...
Depending on which plant, they could disappear.
What you might want to do is just to pay attention to Vic's, over there, it's Sohar's, see how that is, that's what we need you to come back with. But, I think it's all out on the table now. The mayor feels that the city owes you a chance to recoup your business, the mayor would like to see this move forward so that you get that chance. I, I know you, even though you are going to be open, the road's gonna be open, visibility is a factor where, where we've taken away a part of the ability for you to sell your place, because people can't say, oh, look, you know, they have two drives.
And that's it, as they're coming down the thirty-two foot bridge, what can they see? Obviously, I'm familiar with the sign at Vic Sohar's, it's a smaller one on the ground, he's on level ground pretty much too, we're a little bit, we need a little bit of height just to be actually, to see the sign coming down the hill.
And that's all working with you to make it work. So, I would like to see it work, okay?
How long does it take to make a sign?
I think we're at maximum six to eight weeks, sometimes, about around that range.
Right, because I mean, with summertime, coming in the bridge, getting done, it's gonna have to have a sign up as, you know, a lot of, a lot of visitors coming from out of town aren't even gonna see it.
Yeah, we are hoping, obviously, to come to here today, I was hoping to come here today, and get a better feel of what's going on and see if, if that moratorium lifted, you know, we had to go ahead, they come June, if there was no moratorium, then we can start installing a sign right away, so I can have it, you know, something's ordered.
I think, I think when you're talking extending the moratorium, having a businessman such as yourself standing there waiting with everything done, ready to go, is incentive to lift the moratorium and allow you to do what you should be able to do in a community that cares about you. Here.
I, I never understood what the moratorium was supposed to be about, was it safety?
Well, we had a special...
He tried doing safety.
No, aesthetics, it was aesthetics.
Well, you can't do safety, aesthetics, what is it?
Yeah, yeah, that's what the planner said, it has to be aesthetics, it can't be the other.
No, no, it can't...
Mark and try.
No, it can't be aesthetics because of what it says in the moratorium. It aesthetically, if you were to put that sign up on my street, I'd have a burp, okay? But I live in a residential neighborhood. So, basically, what Brian is saying in his memorandum is that you, let me read it. EMCs are the latest in signage technology that is becoming more popular because the signs provide a cost-effective way to deliver commercial messages without the need to manually change the message. Amen. EMCs can centralize signage by displaying the commercial message of several businesses. That won't be necessary. EMCs can respond to the visibility needs of the motoring public, thereby increasing safety and clarity day and night. That's what this city can't quite understand with the moratorium. The city had subway signs that are red. What the hell is that, when your logo is a different color? So, if somebody's looking for logo colors and they see something that's a different color, they're not gonna think that's a subway. So, that's why we needed these kind of things. Allowing EMCs in Macedonia, but regulating their location, residential versus non-residential, provides the city with opportunity to have input as to where these signs are erected. An outright prohibition can lead to a constitutional challenge, which could result in an EMC being erected anywhere at once.
I know it's wrong, but... I, I really, I've met with you, Bob, and you know that...
She also came out.
And the first page.
Thank you.
We love those ones.
I think that, that sign, there should, in that area, I think everybody in that area should be allowed for the sign up.
Well, then, then we're, we're striking on looking like Las Vegas, I don't think so.
No, in the industrial...
And, and it's not like you're starting a virus, you're starting where everybody's gonna put that sign up. That sign's an expensive endeavor, and why should a place like Empire diecasting, for God's sake, put a sign like that up? Alright, but a guy like you, that's the kind of person that Macedonia should bend over backwards and make sure that you can go forward, Bob, and you can gain back... and make sure that you can go forward, Bob, and you can gain back some of that which you lost, and I apologize for that.
Empire dot, that Empire place over there, you can see their sign really good. You know, it's right there on the building, and it's beautiful. I mean, with him, he can't, especially the way they've...
Well, with Vic, you could see the sign too, but the sign gives him the ability. There's a lot of people that say to me, boy, that sign by Vic is a nice sign. There's a lot of people who say to me, boy, that sign by, by Dunkin' Donuts is a nice sign. Well, guess what? Both of those signs are electronic signs. And here you have Kent State University and the city can't. In conjunction with the beautification of this city as it's never been before, right on the front page, what does it say? New electronic sign turns head and can't.
Toys R Us on their government buildings now.
And that's what we should have too. So, moratorium, I think that this gives justification to the fact that the moratorium was an agreement between council and not with the planning commission because the planning commission actually advised against the moratorium. But that's kinda got thrown aside. Just says other inputs from the commission.
I just don't know why council wants to screw over our businesses.
November, we had that meeting.
So, at any rate, we're getting real close. Would you mind coming back one more time? Give us some monument-looking sign like Vic had. Give us the sizes and everything that they asked for in writing in there. And then, we're going to have the ability to have you stand by. And I hope you can go along with that. I'm sorry, that's an inconvenience. But maybe Rita can get a feel for the rest of council if they would be willing to stop the moratorium when it runs out. Or maybe they'll give it an eighteen-month extension.
Well, they could cut it off right now.
Just go there one.
They can end it right now.
Right. Here's what I, here's what I was gonna say, because your business, summer's gonna be here, the bridge is gonna be done, and then if this isn't relieved, I mean, you're pretty much right square one again, so.
And that's a great idea.
Is the purpose of the moratorium, is somebody supposed to be figuring out how the city wants to handle this?
Well, Dan Martin did contact Brian France.
Right.
And what Brian France wrote back was copied to me, and I gave it to Rita, and that actually says right in there again and again and again that you leave yourself in all the vigorous position by aesthetically trying to censor a whole sign. And, you know, that's a big deal with Mr. Martin. He's done that ever since he's lived here.
Yeah, I, I think it's just in certain areas, but industrial, I don't see a problem.
Well, even if this weren't in an industrial area for the kind of business that you're doing, I mean, you're light industrial over there and you're retail, and you're, you're, you need all the help we can get. All right?
Well, we need a motion to table.
We have to have a motion.
I will make a motion to table. Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close, so now you know where we stand. Come back with that stuff whenever you want, if it's a couple of weeks, fine. In the meantime, maybe Rita can work on council and see.
You only have to work on one, don't I?
I don't know.
I don't think so. You, you gotta get a full, a vote of three.
It took at least three to get the moratorium.
Yeah, three to three, we'd be all right. Three to three, we'd be all right. All right, okay, Bob, good luck.
Thanks.
Yeah, definitely.
So, some, so, I mean, I was starting to ask, you know, is the purpose of the moratorium, so then while it's, the moratorium's on, is someone supposed to be working on what the city stance is gonna be?
Right. There was a post, we should have come out the situation.
We should have got emails, we should have got memos.
What their progress is, why? Is it just stalling or is it somebody acting, you know, it's kinda working on that?
No, he did contact the planner. And supplement the plan.
Somebody did give it away.
I know.
What you, I was gonna give you a copy of, but I will have, I will have Diana.
I'll email it, I'll scroll it, I'll have it by scroll it, I'll send it to everyone.
Somehow she, she misunderstood me and got twelve of one instead of six of these.
What did we get? We got that from Brian. What did we get from, from Mr. Martin? Or whoever proposed this?
Nothing. He, he asked for that from Brian, I think, to look at what Brian was gonna say and hoping that it would be to encourage Mr. Martin to continue the moratorium.
So, is Mr. Martin gonna inform the planning commission about what's going on? Or is he gonna pass that on to Rita to have to do, or, you know?
I think that...
What do they do?
I think that...
I wouldn't have known about it had the mayor not given me the planning, so.
I think that what we have here is the communications between planning and the, what's happening on council is totally five miles apart. I mean, the, the, the planning commission's advised against doing this, and yet council people voted for it. But that's another one of those great mysteries that I have to sound, solve like, for instance, why did three people vote against the bridge? I still am trying to figure that one out, alone, trying to figure this out. Before we adjourn, there's a couple of things I'd like to inform you of as the planning commission. Number one, Harry Abrams has been over there on South Roland Hall forever since the road was open. He's the only business on that road. He's the only business on that road, and we're going to bring forward legislation that will change the name of that road. It'll be Harry Abrams Road because there is no Roland Hall, it's on the south side, right where the new bridge is. Harry is the only business on there, he's been there for at least thirty years that I'm aware of, if not more. And we would like to change it. On the north side, there's several businesses, and they are not in favor of changing it. The reason they don't wanna change it on that side is because they'd have to change all their addresses. But on this side, the only one that has to change is Harry Abrams, and you will be seeing that before council this week.
That's gonna be expensive if they have to change their addresses on the other side.
No, they're not gonna change.
Just posing on the north side.
Yes, the south side. The north side is where we have Blackburn Hubcaps, we have all those new businesses, the chemical business, that, we're not even looking at that. Harry only asked for his section road because he's all by himself.
That's pretty common on, especially industrial roads, both sides.
Well, Roland Hall is not here anymore. Harry Abrams is here, and he's been here for over thirty years, so I'd like to honor him for that.
What's his business on there?
He has something to do with...
Mix, mix, circulate, sell stuff.
Yeah, he, he makes stuff that's very highly sought after by thieves. You know, we constantly are taking care of Harry, yeah, it's... So, when a guy that has that problem, you know, we'd like to encourage him to stay here, change the name, the road to his name, no problem.
So, you originate it and have me sponsor?
It's, it's coming, it's coming. All right, another thing is that in April, April fourteenth, I will be meeting with, hopefully, all the businesses from across. Last week, I was able to get the right in, right out penetration for, oh, Charlie.
No trumpeting.
So, that means that all the money will be spent on the road only by the businesses in that development because that's not our property, it's their property. They would probably pay for it by, oh, help me, my mind went blank, under taxes.
Assessment?
Assessment. Assessment for the businesses or the owner of the businesses there. I asked, Dan Stanko has been after me to do this for a long time, so we've, we've been actually working on this maybe two or three years. And by doing that, and now actually having it happen, this is a big deal. I think that it will not only increase business, but why wouldn't they build that road? Because right next to the Great Escape is an easement, and that's where the road will be. Right next to the easement are two empty lots. Just makes common sense to me that why wouldn't they wanna do this? They could sell those two lots. In fact, whoever buys the one is gonna have a cornblot, a think-blot. All right, and I think that's about it. I'd just like to keep you updated on some of these things that are going on. There's some good things going on, there's some good businesses that are talking to the city, but that doesn't so much affect the planning commission unless they actually come here. But I am going to meetings, pretty hot and heavy with this one company, and if we catch that, that'll be a coup. Can't think of nothing else. I think we've got enough, but that's enough. That's all good stuff, that's, that's all.
How do we get the, how do we get the legislation from the state or whatever to put in a street?
It's ODOT's call. ODOT made the call in favor of us. ODOT's made a lot of calls in favor of us, and we own Big Time. This is part of what it's like and what happens when you have a major company like GPD rather than... GPD and URS are heavy hitters. So, things happen with URS, things happen with GPD, that doesn't happen for Joe Schmon and his engineering group. So, by having them working on so many different projects, if you look at the projects in the years, over the years that have been done, GPD was made our engineer when we were selling the Route eighty-two bridge job. GPD had just absorbed Adachi Chuni Lin. Adachi Chuni Lin had designed the Route eighty-two bridge. GPD had them in their employ. The engineer that was in charge of the Route eighty-two bridge job was an engineer at GPD. So, why would you have anybody but GPD for that job? Why would you have anybody other than URS for, for jobs that we've looked at and needed traffic expert help because they have the expertise? So, those are the kind of things that happen when you have heavy hitters working for you, and we do. And we have that. When you look back and you look at all of these jobs, I mean, people already have forgotten about Highland Road and Route Eight. That was a nightmare. Look at it today. How many lanes? Wide is that? My God, it's gotta be five lanes on the side. Look at, look at the Route eighty-two bridge, what bridge? Two thousand and eight it was completed. People already have forgot that that bridge was put in there. And that bridge did not pass council, it failed, and I had to veto the failure. And it went back to council, and it went over on again, and it was high, and I caught the tide. So, that leads me to believe that, you know, some voting can't be about the city. Why wasn't that unanimous? As you sit here today and you look at that, and you look at over forty million dollars worth of infrastructure development when the Route eighty-two extension phase three is completed, that was done at a cost to the residents for two point seven million dollars. That's the only debt we get. All the rest is paid for. I'd say that's a pretty good deal. All right, do we have any other business to discuss tonight?
No, makes a motion to adjourn. Second?
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.